To enable the transcript and the recording button. Reports of cloud.
Recording in progress.
So QDTV, we're now in public session. You guys are all on now, right? So we should be good. Okay. So keep the members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Vice Chair Charlie Shorter. Don't see Charlie yet. Trustee Henry Berger.
Present.
Trustee Brian Oberfeld.
Present.
Trustee Martin Burke.
Present.
Professor Lubie Al-Atrist.
I believe she can't come because of the rescheduling.
Got it. Ali Hayder Hassan, the student rep. We might not have. Nagozi Okonkwo, the student alternate. But I do see Giovanni, trustee Giovanni Pocan.
Hello, everyone.
Great, thanks Giovanni. Okay, you have a quorum. This public meeting in the Committee on Academic Public, Academic Policy Programs and Research is now called to order on March 7, 2020. Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which concluded a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. To the extent necessary, Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary, permits any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings, and authorizes such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with Executive Order, this Executive Order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Copy of the calendar and the agenda is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting, and as a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone could hear. I'd like to ask, I'd now like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery and other guests. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Derek Davis.
Present.
University Provost Daniel Lemmons.
Present.
President Vincent Boudreaux, who's the COPS liaison.
Present.
The interim Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank.
Present.
Okay, and we have a bunch of invited guests. Just quickly, Anne Lopes from Brooklyn College.
Present.
Julia Rigley from the Graduate Center. No, not yet, okay. President Rab.
Yes, please.
Victor Brown from Lehman College.
Present.
Laura Roberts from Lehman College.
Present.
Great. Serigne Guneke from Lehman College. Okay, and Peter Nwosu. Peter, are you on yet? Nope. And then a late add, Josh Brumberg. I know I let you in. Great. Hey, Josh. All right, that's it. It's all yours, Jill.
Thank you, Gil. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolution and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over each other. We will take up the final, following items for approval. Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the May 4, 2021 meeting. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Burger, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. Please again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item passes. Action Item 1B is the policy calendar. We are now going to take up Item 1B1 for approval. Policy Item 1B1 is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in counselor education, clinical mental health counseling, leading to a master of science degree at Lehman College. I now call on interim Executive Vice Chairman, Chancellor, and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further background on this item. Dan?
Thank you, Chair O'Donnell Torme. Lehman College is well positioned to help address the shortage of mental health counselors in the Bronx area. The proposed graduate degree program in clinical mental health counseling will offer a unique opportunity for non-traditional or adult students to enroll. The program will also provide opportunity for high-quality, accessible, and affordable mental health education and treatment for residents in the Bronx and the surrounding area. Within CUNY, these are, there are excellent qualified faculty members with degrees, skills, and/or experience to teach in the proposed program. And since the program is designed to meet mental health counseling needs in local communities, an integral program component is giving students practical education and hands-on experience required to meet the local community-based needs. I invite my colleagues from Lehman College, Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs and Student Success, Peter Nwosu, if he has made it into the meeting, I'm not sure. If not, Associate Provost for Academic Programs and Educational Effectives, Mr. Victor Brown is here, and Associate Dean of Education, Seren Ning, I believe is here, and Department Chair Janet DeSimone, if they would like to say, make additional comments about this proposed action.
In terms of proposed actions and additional comments, I will yield to Laura Roberts, who was instrumental in the development of the program.
Thank you, Victor. Laura?
Well, first, thank you for inviting me. Actually, Janet DeSimone is not here, so I'm hearing her. So I'm actually a counselor education faculty, so I took the initiative, and I worked on the proposal with an outside consultant. I mean, it's really driven based on the need. There's definitely a disproportionate, I just, there's, there's a deficiency, there's not enough providers in terms of programs that offer medical health programming in the Bronx, especially compared to Manhattan. Yet, there's, there are quite a few mental health needs, a very underserved community. And so, we thought it was really important to add to our existing programs, that this would actually help serve the need of the community, but also the needs of students who are also very, very, we had quite a bit of an interest in the program as such as well. And so, I hope that it's, I think it's, the proposals there, I think there's an impression that people have specifically.
Yeah, so I thank you for that. I would, I'll move the approval for Policy Item 1B1, but do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Does it have any discussion now or any further questions of Laura Roberts? So then, we will now vote. Again, please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Thank you very much. We are now going to take up Item 1B2 for approval. Policy Item 1B2 is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in astrophysics leading to the master of science degree at the CUNY Graduate Center. I now call interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. There's a large demand for students who've expressed interest in additional coursework and research experience related to the field of astrophysics, for a program to prepare them for doctoral work and beyond. The proposed MS program in astrophysics will be based at and administered through the Graduate Center, and will involve over 15 faculty from nine different CUNY campuses. Programs, facilities, and faculty will be strategically supported by CUNY's already existing NASA-NY Space Grant Community College Partnership Program, and a partnership with Flatiron Institute Center for Computational Astrophysics, as well as by national programs such as Louis Stokes Alliance for Minority Participation, and the McNair Scholars Program. I invite my colleague and from Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, Julia Rigley, Graduate Center, to say more about this proposal, and I believe also that Professor Josh Brumberg, Dean of Sciences at CUNY Graduate Center, is also available to respond to questions.
I'm not sure Julia is on. Do I see?
Julia may not have joined us, so maybe we can turn to Josh.
Thanks, Provost Lemmons. You summarized it. I think we're very excited about this new program, and it's bringing together, as you mentioned, faculty from nine different campuses, including many from the community colleges, to serve an underserved population of scientists, and we really are excited about adding this to our roster of graduate programs. But I am happy to answer any questions people may have.
Okay, so I will then move the approval of Policy Item 1B2. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions or questions for Dr.? Yes, Henry?
Just an inquiry. In the proposal, you refer to the Fisk-Vandervils program. That's a two-year program. Is that a 60-credit program, or is it still, does 30 credits spread over, over two years?
I don't know the exact number of credits of the Fisk-Vandervils program, but I will point out that the outside evaluator we got from that program was the director of that program, and she was very happy with it. Our program is also designed to be completed in two years. Sometimes it's tough to compare the number of credit hours from one institution to the other, so I'm sorry, I can't give you a more exact answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Burke, question?
Yes, Martin.
And it is to my colleague, Dr. Bloomberg. Hi, Josh.
Hi, Marty.
Josh, I realize that it's premature to ask specific questions about governance. However, since this is one of many programs which may be helping to reimagine graduate education going forward in CUNY, might you give us a few hints of what faculty governance could look like in a program which could be drawing on upwards of colleagues from nine different campuses?
Well, as you know, all the new programs essentially have a year to set their own governance, but we have begun these discussions, and we expect the governance to look very much similar to some of the other new master's programs like nanoscience and data science, where there will be an appointed executive officer, in this case, Director of Master's Program, and then elected executive committee from the faculty, and then they would have the same standing committees that you're familiar with from the doctoral programs, that is, an admission and awards committee, a examinations committee, a faculty membership committee, a curriculum committee, and then we've, we've now started asking each of our programs to have a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, and those will be the standing committees reporting to the executive committee, and they'll be representatives of both faculty and students. The students will serve for one year, and the faculty will serve for three years.
Thanks, Josh. And just a quick follow-up for those of us, those in the room who are not interested in the mysteries of governance like you and I are, the relationship between the standing doctoral program in physics and this new master's program in astrophysics.
They're going to be independent, but I should say that the PhD program in astrophysics strongly supports this. There will be some overlap in curriculum. It'll be beneficial to our doctoral program because we believe we'll now be able to offer additional courses in astronomy and astrophysics that will be available to both our doctoral students and our newly minted master students.
Thanks, Josh.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, I move the approval of Policy, did I do that? I will now vote. We're at the voting now. But please, so at this point, please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. We are now going to take up Item 1B3 for approval. Policy Item 1B3 is a resolution regarding the transfer, regarding the transfer of the degree granting authority of the Doctor of Philosophy Program in Nursing from the Graduate Center to Hunter College. I now call interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. There's national and local nursing faculty shortage that we probably have all heard about, and it's expected to intensify over the next four years. An external consultant's report in February 2020 concluded that since the university's PhD program in nursing was no longer accepting applicants, there was a need for a PhD program within the university system to educate and mentor nurse scientists who could conduct critically important research on health disparities and health equity. The consultant determined that Hunter College faculty were well poised to mount such a new program. The proposed action is aligned with the university's strategic agenda of moving professionally-oriented doctorates to the campuses that support them. The proposed program will prepare nurse scientists to conduct research that supports health equity by addressing the health of diverse urban individuals, families, and communities. Hunter College has the requisite faculty, classroom, administrative, and library resources to assume sole responsibility for implementing the program, which will be based on the apprenticeship model of research training that combines the same rigorous coursework that was offered at the Graduate Center, and the program evaluation will be based on outcome objectives that are aligned with national standards. As discussed with representatives from Lehman College and the College of Staten Island, their faculty will continue to participate in the activities of the program, including course instruction, dissertation committee membership, and representation on the advisory ward that will be convened on an as-needed basis. To further elaborate, I invite my colleague, President Jennifer Rab of Hunter College, to say more about this proposed action.
Thank you so much, Dan, and thank you to the Chancellor for the support. Hunter is very excited about this transition. We've been intimately involved in the doctoral program in nursing since its inception at the Graduate Center, and this transition will allow Hunter to have all aspects of nurse training from undergraduate to transfer RNs to master's DNP, and now the PhD. As the largest nursing school at CUNY, it will allow us to apply for different center and other NIH grants, and also other types of rankings. So we see this as a step forward for our school of nursing as a service to the city and the university of, as you said, dealing with the nursing faculty shortage, but also are very eager and excited about including our colleagues throughout CUNY, CSI, Lehman, but all the other nursing programs, as well as, as faculty members, and also dissertation instructors in the program. So we're very excited about this new step for us, and see it as an inclusive venture for the university. So thank you for the opportunity.
Very much, Jennifer. So I'm going to move the approval of Policy Item 1B3. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Any questions or discussions for Dr. Rab?
Burke, but a question for the Executive Vice Chancellor.
Certainly, Martin.
Are there students who are still finishing their degrees under the ages of the doctoral program at the Graduate Center, and if so, how will they be handled in this transition?
I don't know if, Martin, if I can give you an exact answer to that. There were not students taken into the program the previous year while this, you know, this program was under review. I referred to the, the outside reviewer that came to evaluate. But I'm not sure. I can't tell you for sure if there are still students remaining in the program that would need to finish. But I assume that if they would need to do that, obviously, we will have to make the necessary arrangements, whether it was finishing under that program or transferring.
Any, any other discussions or questions? Or if not, then we will now vote. Again, reminding, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. We are now going to take up Item 1B4 for approval. Policy Item 1B4 is a resolution regarding the closing of the Department of Kinesiology at Brooklyn College. I now call interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemon to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. The Department of Kinesiology at Brooklyn College has had a significant departure of personnel and declining enrollments over a number of years. Furthermore, the number and the rank of faculty have made it increasingly difficult to manage the academic programs associated with the department. As a result, all the programs would find better academic homes in the administration of other departments due to those declining enrollments. Based on disciplinary and scholarly fit, faculty expertise, the ability to contribute to the curriculum of the receiving department, and the potential for collaborations with colleagues, the remaining faculty will be transferred to the Departments of Biology, Health, and Nutrition Sciences and Secondary Education. Faculty fully endorse the decision to close the department and to transfer to other academic departments, and I would also just note that this is a fairly rare kind of action within academia, and I think that I want to applaud Brooklyn College for recognizing that this reorganization is the best one to preserve the programs that are important, and to do it a way that has faculty repositioned in departments that are appropriate to them. I would invite Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs Anne Lopes of Brooklyn College to say anything else that she would like to add about this proposed action.
Thank you, Executive Vice Chancellor Lemmons. We all believe that it is best for the department and for students. The programs that exist in the department will find great strength among faculty in the departments to which the faculty leading those programs will go. They are all very excited about receiving the programs and the faculty from kinesiology. So we feel like it's a big win-win for everyone, students, faculty, and the administration too, in trying to make work a department that has had declining enrollments and declining numbers of faculty, and has been, for the department, very difficult to administer itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lopes. So I move the approval of Policy Item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Henry, any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, we will now vote. Again, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item passes. Now, we are now, I hope I'm getting this right, because I got an email from Gail, so I think.
Yes, you're totally fine. This next one, there was some extraneous language, so we're on the last item.
Okay.
From the dashboard. You're good.
Take up Item 1B5 for approval. Policy Item 1B5 is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRIT dashboard. I again call on Executive Vice Chair and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further information.
Thank you. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented in the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPRIT dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. Please note that we need to introduce an amendment to the dashboard that was published last week. The following items from Gutman Community College must be retracted as they need additional refinement related to recently released grading policy revisions from the Office of the Registrar, and those are grades of incomplete policy, Gutman Community College E-permit policy, honors list criteria policy, repeat course policy, and transfer credit evaluation policy.
So you have to, we're going to move the amendment to that, right? That's what's next.
So I move the approval of an amendment to Policy Item 1B5 to remove the items for Gutman Community College for further review. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Any, any discussion? If not, I guess, do I have to now move the whole?
Yes.
Well, now, I need, I need to move approval of the full, the amended policy for, for Item 1B5. So do I have a second for this? This is now for the approval.
Burke, second.
Thank you, Burke. Do I have a second or any discussion? First, I got a second. Any discussion about this? If not, then we will vote on this. Again, only if you abstain or oppose. Hearing none, the item passes. Now, are we doing the information item too, Gail?
Yes, and the interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Denise Maybank, is going to present, and Denise, if you have a presentation, I've made you a co-host, so you are good to go on sharing a screen.
Chair, I wonder if I could, could add, you had a response to trustee Burke's question about the nursing program.
Certainly.
So the, the answer to that is that Executive Officer Dr. Juan Battal, a GC faculty member from the Sociology Department, will be overseeing the research of the students that are remaining in the program, and the Graduate Center has put in place a comprehensive plan to assist those students until the expected closure in 2024. Hunter College will request from NICE, a placeholder for the existing program until June 30, 2024.
Thank you, ABC Leons.
You are welcome. Happy to be able to provide that.
Vice Chancellor Mayback?
Thank you. I know the day is far spent, and I am not going to tax your time or attention, but I'm going to try to at least keep you engaged for a few minutes. So I am going to share my screen, and get this moving. Hopefully, you are seeing the presentation, not the.
Well, I don't know that.
Okay, there you go. All right. Okay, so I'm grateful for this opportunity to bring this information before you during this transformational time for our institution. It's been eight months and approximately 153 days for me during an unprecedented time, and unprecedented times call for extraordinary responses, unparalleled attention, and that is what we are giving to the circumstances I will present to you today. So this is the roadmap for what it is that we are going to take a look at, and I'm assuming you've got you in the screen as well. So I'm just going to keep going, try to get you out the way. Okay. Our reality, our responses, and our repositioning. So you can look for these icons, and you'll know we're getting close as we make our way through them. In terms of our reality, I want to take an unflinching and serious look at what it is that we are facing. We have a multi-year enrollment trend chart that I want to share with you, and then I'll talk a bit about summer enrollment and fall enrollment to date. In these two graphs, you see our total student enrollment in a trend from, a trend line from 2010 to the present, to the fall at least, and you'll see that the enrollment was basically on the rise. You see the high, the peak of 245,000-plus students, and I think that's 2014, if I'm looking correctly. The, the previous year from where we are now was 241,000, and we are current, the 2020 fall semester was at 229,992 students. When you look at our new student enrollment, you will see that it has been strong, and we took that dip last year, last fall, from 40,000 in 2019 to 37,000. But you'll note that our graduate enrollment is increasing. In terms of our community college enrollment, you see the chart there, and you'll note that we are in a six-year decline for our community college engagement and enrollment. In terms of actual numbers for summer, summer enrollment is lower than compared to summer 2020 and summer 2019. I want to bring to your attention that we had an unprecedented number of students enrolled for summer 2020. It was an aberration. It was not what we were accustomed to. So I think the comparisons to 2019 are a little closer to what it is we are truly experiencing, but it was great to know that we had that enrollment during summer 2020. So there are 63,018 students enrolled in the summer 2021 term. In terms of undergraduates, 53,140, 53,140, and that is lower than it was in 2020 and lower than it was in 2019. And this includes 13,388 students. And this includes 13,388 students for our community colleges. Our graduate enrollment is 9,878, and that is hot, lower than summer 2020, as I indicated, but higher than summer 2019 at the same point in time. And these were all run at the end of May. I think it was May 24th is the date. For fall 2021, overall enrollment is lower compared to 2020 and 2019. There are currently 101,683 students enrolled in the fall 2020 term. That number is 17% lower than 2020 and 23% lower than 2019. As we look more closely, there are currently 87,423 undergraduate students enrolled, also lower than the previous two fall semesters, but it includes 23,612 students enrolled at our community colleges. It also includes 5,852 first-time freshman students enrolled in the fall term, a number lower than the previous year, but higher than in 2019. And it also includes 2,807 new undergraduate transfer students, lower than the previous two years. As we look at graduate enrollment, again, as I said, this is where we are growing, and that is a good thing. There are currently 14,260 graduate students enrolled in the fall 2021 term, 2% higher than in 2020 and 4% higher than in 2019. Currently, there are 1,982 new graduate students enrolled in the fall term, higher than previous terms. So I have two other slides in here, and you are welcome to the slide deck. I'm not going to do a whole lot to talk about them, but they are comparisons to what is happening nationally. We are not alone, but that doesn't mean that it feels good or that it's okay. My mother used to say, if everybody was jumping off the cliff, are you going with them? And no, we don't want to be there, but this is the reality of what's happening nationally. So let's move on to our responses, the strategies that we have implemented in response to what it is that is happening within our university, on our campuses, and within our total experience. So we have some successful ongoing initiatives. We want to, I'm going to talk just briefly about the Enrollment Management Strike Force that occurred in the fall. There's some communications and campaigns that are being pushed, that have been pushed out. There are some new admissions events, critical partnerships, and a pilot that is related to our community colleges. So in terms of our successful ongoing initiatives, we have our College Bridge for All program, and that is a collaboration with the New York City Department of Education, where we provide, we provided coaches over the course of the summer last year to, we provided 200 coaches to about 52,000 New York City high school students who graduated from 400 high schools. And the preliminary analysis of this particular program indicates that 71% of students served by the College Bridge for All in 2020 successfully enrolled in college. They had questions answered by near peers so that they could understand what was happening and what it meant for them to come into the experience. And 71% were able to enroll. In terms of revamping our Applied Associate degrees, many of, unfortunately, we found that many of the students who go through our Associate Degree Programs do not wind up gainfully employed in the ways that we would anticipate. And they do, only 8% of them are entering the labor market. And so we are working with Provost, Workforce Development Dean's, and 10 of our institutions to look at the Applied Associate Degree Programs and to determine what the best thing is to do. We've been engaged with consultant Bain &amp; Company to analyze this data to help us take a look. And we just met with them, I believe it was last week, where they presented a considerable amount of information and recommendations for how we might move forward. When we think about programs like computer technology, energy technicians, computer programming and software development, music recording technology, these are hot careers. And there is no reason why we shouldn't be able to have a better outcome. And so we need to be critical of what it is we are doing and be honest about what it is that is necessary. In terms of our Transfer Steering Committee, we have established since February 2020 a committee that includes presidents, provosts, student affairs leaders, enrollment management leaders, campus-based administrators, students, and members of the Office of Academic Affairs as well. And their purpose is to identify actionable system-level programs that will inform the direction of the university's transfer work, align and coordinate the work with teams represented on the committee, and engage college leaders in the work. And so they have been busily looking at what it is we do around transfer and how we can make that better. So there are tools that have been put in play, and we're trying to make sure that during the summer, this summer, we push that information out so presidents and other administrators can take a look at the transfer data and start to really wrap their heads around what it is that's happening in this important area of what we do. In fall 2021, we hope that the presidents and the chancellor will be able to engage with national experts in the, in terms of looking at transfer and formally commit to a system-wide effort to improve those offerings. And then also in fall 2021, the university will launch the next phase of the Academic Momentum Campaign with a focus on transfer. The CEO Jobs Council is an effort where we've been able to work with those in the workforce environment to make certain that work is, that we are able to employ at least 25,000 CUNY students over the next 10 years with a focus on internships, apprenticeships, and full-time work in high-demand occupations. Five CEO council member firms will be working with four of our community colleges to redesign the Applied Associate Degrees and to include apprenticeships in the areas of business operation and technology, and that includes software development and systems administration. Mayback, okay. So the next one of the activities that we implemented was the Enrollment Management Strike Force. In the fall, we convened a group of 17 individuals representing the broad aspects of the university, central office, as well as campuses. And those individuals generated a list of 90-some-plus different ideas that might allow us to grow enrollment. And so that report is available, but it was done in two parts. So there were the general strategies, looking at the expectations and really trying to identify the reasons for decline and how we could promote enrollment. And then to look at communications and marketing also. The segmented solutions were those that presented what could be done for the two-year institutions, the senior institutions, graduate and professional colleges, and what needed to be done at the system level. The solutions are identified in the document as well as some projected activities to deal with some of the challenges that we identified in that process. In terms of communications and campaigns, we've expanded our ads on social media to meet our students where they are. We have ads in Snapchat and some first-time ads that market CUNY across the country. So we're going after others at this point beyond the region and beyond what's usual. We've created ad campaigns to promote the two-year institutions and the fact that you can make high salaries from that experience, and it features our students. We've placed radio ads with Hot 97 and Power 105 to reach Black and Latino students across the tri-state region. We have an issue with losing the number of Black men and Latino men among our ranks. And so we have to be aggressive in figuring this out. We launched the CUNY First Spanish TV ad on Univision and with their sites and with hashtag CUNY Familia to highlight the many supports a student can find at the website cuny.edu/familia. We revamped the admissions webpages to include on our main page, learn more, apply, information about our colleges, information about transfer, and information about that. In terms of admissions, we have, in addition to all of the other admissions opportunities that we offer and the events and activities being done on the campuses, we added two virtual events in this space. The Virtual College Fair was held in March, and we had 5,000 people register for that with attendance at 56.7%. And on average, each participant visited two of the colleges. We had the virtual open house for those who were already identified in some way associated with our colleges or have had an offer made to them. And 1,632 unique registrants, of which 718 participated in that virtual open house. And there is a website that offers the information about the sessions that were provided in that context. In terms of critical partnerships, we have an internal partnership that is really important and critical for our Bronx constituents. And that particular group, the known basically as B-Tag, the Bronx Transfer Affinity Group, includes Bronx Community College, Gutman Community College, Hostos Community College, Borough of Manhattan Community College, the End Lehman College. And they work to facilitate the seamless transfer of students from the Associate Degree to the Bachelor's Degree and beyond. It is a critical relationship that moves so much forward. We have a partnership, as everyone knows, with DOE. We value our relationship with DOE, but we engaged in a new effort on the part of the United Federation of Teachers to attract guidance counselors to help students yet get enrolled in college. And so we are working with them very directly and offering them support as they work with students, making it easy for them to get the information they need, to share with them, and to be certain that they are getting the answers they need to support students in that effort. We also have a critical partnership with ACS, the Administration for Children's Services, for our Foster Care Student Initiative. And they are looking to grow the number of students who are in our dorm spaces. We listened to a documentary that was done regarding foster care students in college that featured some of our students that are staying at the summit. And the young man said, "The dorm project was his gateway to heaven." And so if we can have that impact, we need to make certain that we are reaching as many students as possible in that way. We also had a flexible start. We have a flexible start pilot because it will continue into the fall. And Borough of Manhattan Community College and the Guardia College participated in this effort. And so you see the information there specifically from the Borough of Manhattan Community College effort. They piloted an eight-week session, so it started later. People who had not been able to enroll in time for the spring semester got another opportunity to do so and to get full credit for the coursework that they were taking. So total enrollment was 748 students, and 53 sections were offered. 1,200 of the 13 25 seats were occupied with class, class sizes of 23 on average. There was strong demand for this program. And so we're looking to see how many more students we can get involved, how much it can support the credit momentum aspect of our efforts. Our repositioning, what are we doing yet to come? And so I'm going to start with the Enrollment Management Bootcamp. We are offering campuses the opportunity to bring groups of 10 to 12 campus stakeholders together for a five-module interactive series to support the development of campus-specific strategic enrollment management planning. And the modules include college identity, data and trends, market assessment projections, and strategies. We are working with EAB, the Education Advisory Board, to bring the information that they have to their on the market analysis aspects as well as helping us to focus in on strategies. And the first cohort will happen over the summer. Diversifying enrollment targets becomes critical. We need a strategic enrollment management plan. And that is where we will be focusing our attention. We are taking an unflinching approach at our reality. And so when we look at those numbers and those trends going down, we recognize that we have to be bold in what it is that we are doing. We are going to live up to that statement, to boldly go where no one has gone before. And that is the nature of dealing with things in unprecedented space. We have to be nimble, we have to be flexible, and we have to be ready to do the thing that we have been learning most, and that is to pivot. What is important in pivoting is making sure that you have focus. And so a part of this effort will be about looking at enrollment beyond the usual, not just depending on our relationship with DOE to keep us fed in our enrollment numbers, but to really start to think about where else we reach and to start to really bolster our efforts around adult and continuing learners for all segments. And so we're looking forward to having that happen and to continue it, to have students in our midst and coming to our doors who are going, who have been educated in different ways already. But we now will embrace them in ways that will make a difference as well. So I have a question for you. What would make someone smile that brightly? Only one thing, no app necessary for admissions. We want to be certain that our DOE students can come to us without having to go through any extra changes. All they need to do is identify their six schools or colleges. And we want to be able to move that process forward and make sure that they're getting what they need to know early, that we want them, that we want to engage with them, and we want to have them at CUNY. So we'll be doing a pilot for our fall 2022 admission cycle and really trying to see if this will help us to move that, to move that needle and gain back our share of the DOE students who we've lost to other institutions. CUNY in Residence is an effort that is beginning over the course of the summer where we are helping the colleges that are interested to designate liaisons for the community-based organizations to cultivate relationships and trust by being highly visible and actively engaged in the community. We want to reach faith-based organizations and all of the entities where we know our Black and Latino males may be most engaged so that we can have that opportunity to regain them and to show them opportunity within CUNY. And there's much more. There are more approaches, there are more programs, and there are more tools that will be at our disposal. In terms of approaches, we really need to start to look at the pedagogy beyond a pandemic, to think about the professional development for our faculty and for our staff that interact with students. DOE, we have a steering committee of DOE and CUNY leaders, and we are talking about this because DOE is very concerned that our faculty understand just who the students are that are coming to us at this point. And I know our faculty is sensitive to this already. And what do we need to do to support them as they support students? As they make a transition from Google to Blackboard? What does that look like? What are the things we need to do to help our faculty be in their best position to help our students? Revamping the homepage to emphasize applying to CUNY and our value proposition is critical as well. Campaigns to inform new students, they may be eligible for federal stimulus funds as part of the American Recovery Plan. Get them here, help them understand the benefits that are available to them as they look to improve their lives. And to address their social mobility. More programs like, like Lehman's Extension, known as Lex. It is a program that is designed to look at the. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand adult Bronxites who don't have a college degree. Many of them who have a high school diploma, diploma, others of them who have some college but did not attain a degree. Hundred and sixty thousand in particular. We'll capture all of them if we can. And so the initiative would bring new and existing programs that are aligned with workforce demands to students who need. Whose needs are not fully met by current programs, by scheduling or delivering those courses in the evenings. And at other points in time. So it's an opportunity in the near future. That will be, that will be addressing the changing needs of the region and further promoting student success. More tools, College App is an opportunity for our campuses to know more about what's happening in the region, in your neighborhood. And to reach out in marketing their course, their courses and their offerings to those particularly in the adult population. Who might be seeking to have a new opportunity. And so College App is going, our particular campus is Kingsborough College, Community College. And they are identified by College App as the most determined partner they have. And so Dr. Joanna Rivera and Provost Russell at Kingsborough have been using this program and working with it. To make sure that they are reaching out to those in their, in the region who might want to come to Kingsborough to get a degree. Or to be a part of a program, but from College App, they will be, actually be able to do mailings to the area. And to reach out to people very specifically in a marketing. So all of this is done as a part of a bigger plan. We have to make certain that as an institution, we are letting students know. That our strategies, our activities, our programs and our responses are based in an ethic of care. Because we want to cultivate that sense of belonging. It's necessary to attract students, it's necessary to retain students. And it's necessary to distinguish CUNY as an engine of social mobility. I will leave you with this quote from Winston Churchill, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal." It is the courage to continue that counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. Uh, do we have any questions? It's a, it's an aggressive program and I'm sure we'll be looking forward to you reporting back to us. To see how effective some of these new initiatives are to get our enrollment back up.
Glad to it anytime.
Anyone have any questions?
Uh, Burke, a question. Actually two. Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Maybank, for the presentation. I'd hope we'd be able to get the slides from you or, okay. And while I was pleased to see the comparative, not pleased, but interested by the comparative information. For the falls and the summers, uh, missing in the presentation was the recent term, spring. Since fall tends to have slightly better enrollment numbers, even in the worst of times at CUNY. Uh, when might we expect to see the spring twenty twenty-one numbers? Especially now that you have preliminary numbers for the summer with the, always the exception of Kingsborough and LaGuardia.
So I have a, I have some preliminary numbers I can share with you. Um, well, it wouldn't be included in the presentation as we're still trying to clean that data. But I can tell you that, um, we have a total of two hundred and, we had a total of two hundred and six. Thousand six hundred and fifteen undergraduates, thirty thousand two graduate students. For a total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and seventeen students in our spring semester. So if you think about what the number was for fall, it is actually high. And these are preliminary numbers and so, you know, we'll see what happens once it's all cleaned and I certainly will make sure. That your group gets that information.
Okay, and a follow-up if you don't mind. Uh, since, since trustee Berger and I were earlier at the committee fiscal affairs. And certainly for the community colleges, it's not simply tuition slash revenue. But it is per capita support from the city and the state. Might, we assume that they can, the enrollments for the community colleges were even. Worse double-digit numbers than the ones you reported in the aggregate for the fall.
I am looking to see, okay, so what I'm looking at for spring for community college. Numbers preliminarily was seventy-two thousand eighteen. So, yes.
Thank you.
You are welcome and I will get that information to you when it's.
Any other questions, discussion? Well, I know we don't have to vote on this, so this was just an informational item, so I thank you for this. I know it's a late evening. We've gone beyond on all the timings of these committees, so I'm sure everybody's looking for, I'm going to make a motion to, uh. To return, I'm sure I have many seconds.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all. Have a good night.